It's a big deal, but I tell you, I just did watch it, that's why. You know what I mean?
I was thinking like, maybe when there's streets, we need to designate as like, these are streets.
Right, then you know something.
Yeah, it is. It feels that way to me.
Would you like a fan?
Me too.
Oh, God.
That's right.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm gonna call the committee of the whole meeting to order for Tuesday, December ninth, 2025. If you will please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Madam Clerk, if you will call the roll.
Yes, Alderman Cox.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Rockford.
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman Otriano.
Here.
Alderman Carlson.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donnellan.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Chair Quorumus present.
Chair will entertain a motion to allow Alderman Cox to participate remotely per the statute. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the committee meetings from last meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Next on the agenda is the treasurer's report. Madam Treasurer.
Thank you, Chair. The treasurer's report for the Corporate Fund for the month of November. Beginning balance sixty million nine hundred twenty-seven thousand seven hundred forty-eight dollars. Total receipts we took in of eleven million six hundred fifty-two thousand one hundred sixty-two dollars. Total disbursements in the month of November totaling ten million four hundred twenty thousand three hundred and twenty dollars, which left the Corporate Fund ending balance of the month of November at sixty-two million one hundred fifty-nine thousand five hundred and ninety, excuse me, ninety dollars. The ending general fund balance included five million eight hundred sixty-three thousand five hundred and twenty-four dollars, which is the November ending balance for ARPA money. That concludes my report, Chair. Thank you.
Is there a motion to accept the treasurer's report as submitted?
So moved.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Next on the agenda are presentations, and we have one presentation from CWLP. Mr. Chi. You will come forward to introduce yourself, and the floor is yours. Thank you.
Good evening. Tom Chi with the City Water, Light and Power. Go ahead and start the presentation.
There you go.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Busher, Chair Donnellan, members of the city council, everybody else tuning in. I promise this is going to be the most exciting presentation on grant compliance you're going to hear all week. And if not, I hope that at least rings a good bell for you. Before we begin, I want to share the purpose of tonight's presentation. This evening is not about selecting or approving any specific energy project. Instead, it's about ensuring that CWLP and Springfield remain well positioned as opportunities arise. As part of Phase Two of the Energy Transition Community Grant Program, the state requires that we present our proposed use of funds and document stakeholder and public engagement. For this phase, our proposed use includes planning work and the potential acquisition of land needed to support future opportunities. My goal tonight is to simply walk through our proposal, explain how it fits the state's intent, and share how it aligns with the requirements of the grant program. To understand our proposal, it helps to briefly describe what the Energy Transition Community Grant Program is. It's a state initiative designed to support communities that have experienced economic or social impacts from changes in the energy sector, such as the reduction of fossil fuel power plant operations and coal mine closures. When transitions like these occur, there's a ripple effect. So jobs, tax bases, and local economies all shift. The state developed this program to make sure communities navigating these changes had the resources to plan ahead. This is not a construction grant. This is a transition grant. Its purpose is to help communities plan, prepare, and respond to the changes happening around them and to position themselves for future opportunities. Springfield qualifies for this program because our region has experienced multiple energy sector transitions in recent years. In 2020 and 2021, CWLP's domino units thirty-one, thirty-two, and thirty-three were retired. 2024, the Viper Mine in Logan County was closed, and then in 2027, the King Cave Power Plant is scheduled for retirement. Each of these events impacts our communities in different ways. Taken together, they place Springfield within the communities the states intend to support through this grant program. Our approach here is intentionally phased. Phase One confirmed our eligibility with the state, and we secured an award of four hundred seventy-nine thousand three hundred twenty-one dollars and eighty-nine cents. In Phase Two, which we are currently in, this focuses on early-stage planning and potential acquisition of land that would position the city for clean energy or community benefit opportunities. These could include concepts related to renewable energy, energy storage, public education on clean energy technologies, or other similar transition-related uses. The emphasis here is on securing the framework, the groundwork, including land if appropriate, so that we can be competitive for future grants. At this phase, the focus is purely preparatory. We're not committing to a specific build-out. We're not determining sizes or selecting technologies. These future phases, three, four, and five, would depend on feasibility, additional funding opportunities, and of course, city council's direction. One of the most important lessons that we've learned from previous funding cycles is that communities that prepare early are the ones who are awarded these grant funds. If we wait until funding opportunities become available before we start preparing, we're already behind. So by preparing now, we're ensuring that Springfield and CWLP is ready when these opportunities do come about. This approach gives us the flexibility, reduces risk, and aligns closely with the purpose of this grant opportunity. And in this scenario, being prepared often means having the land ready and available. Without land, we can't even apply for some of these future funding opportunities. It is also important to be clear what this proposal is not, does not represent. It is not an approval of a specific energy project. It's not approval of any type of construction. It's not approval of acquiring any specific parcels of land, and it doesn't commit the city to any type of future project. This is purely preparatory, and there's no implementation decisions being made currently. So I will close with this. Hopefully, some of that rang a bell with you. Tonight is simply about giving CWLP and the city the ability to prepare. Not permission to build, not permission to commit, but simply to prepare so that we're ready when these opportunities become available. And thank you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Alderman Williams.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Real quick. So Viper closed in 2024, you said?
Yes.
And what is scheduled to retire in '27?
The King Cave Power Plant.
King Cave, okay. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Chair.
Anyone else have a question? Mr. Chi, while he's here. Mr. Chi, thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda are ordinances tabled to remain in the committee, 2025-497 to 2025-499. Anyone wish to take any action on either one of those ordinances? Hearing none. Ordinances for committee consideration. Madam Clerk.
CWLP, 2025-503, an ordinance authorizing an expenditure in the amount of one hundred and sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars for the 2025 Helping Homes Energy Efficiency Renovation Improvement Program for the Office of Public Utilities.
Motion for consent.
Motion and a second for consent. Alderman Gregory.
Yes, just real quick. Can somebody help me out, Doug, or anybody? What does it take to be a CWLP-certified contractor? By the way, I wanna compliment Bill's Home Improvement. I've seen them do some work.
I don't know that off the top of my head, and I'll have to find out and get back to you, though. I can't do that.
All right, appreciate you.
Yeah, yeah, not a problem. Anything further, Alderman?
No, sir.
Okay, any further questions? Any further questions? Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Madam Clerk.
2025-504, an ordinance accepting proposal number UE twenty-five dash ten with landes and gear for CWLP Advanced Metering Infrastructure AMI Communication System in an amount not to exceed twenty million one hundred forty-one thousand five hundred nine dollars and sixty-eight cents for a three-year period for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move to amend.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adopt Amendment Number One. Mr. Mordock, will you please explain the amendment?
Yeah. Amendment Number One changes the authorized amount to fourteen million one hundred and forty-nine thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars and eleven cents. What that does is we are bidding separately the actual labor for this project. So the twenty million dollar number included the labor, but we have that out for a separate bid that will be coming back to this council later. What the fourteen million dollars authorizes is project management, the software, and the hardware for the AMI readers.
Thank you. Alderman Williams.
Oh, there, so, sorry.
Alderman Rockford.
Yes, Doug, run me through what this covers. Is this, do these AMIs, is water involved in this?
No. Well, yes. So what we did was, they had several bidders. Some were, when we asked for electric and water proposals, complete proposals too. And there are some bidders that bid parts and pieces, so we kicked them out, because they didn't really meet the full proposal. They focused it down to a handful of bidders and then selected two to kind of move forward, and then worked in detail with that. And there was a huge selection committee of about fifteen basically technical people from the, well, I'm trying to get the numbers right. The majority of the fifteen were from the TND Division, you know, two from water to just review it, because I'll get to that in a second, and then the commercial office as well, having representation on it. So as they moved that forward, the main thing is looking at, you know, the electrical, getting the infrastructure, so having the communication network installed around the city as well then as installing the electric meters and having that selection. Water then would be able to add on to that in progression in the future as funding is available. And I would say, you know, more to it is, instead of installing the AMRs that we're installing on water, is start to then install AMI water. It'll take time, because we don't have the funds to do a full implementation of the entire water system all at once, like we're gonna do with the electric. The electric, it will take like three years, I believe, you know, as far as an estimate goes, as far as getting full installation with that. So that's kind of the process that they took to get to this point, and as the amendment has alluded to is that staff believes that we can do the labor cheaper by bidding it out separately, and we can get some other installers to do that, and we'll get a cheaper price as well.
And so how about funding? What's that? How's that gonna affect taxpayers?
So the electric is being funded by the bond refunding that we did last year. So the savings from that is going to pay for the complete installation of the electric meters. Because that was the electric bonds that we refunded for, for the savings.
And do you have a timeline? You said down the road with the water department. What, when you say down the road in the future? An estimate?
Well, you know, off the top of my head, I don't remember how many AMR meters they do in a typical year, but it's gonna be probably something very similar. One of the other things, too, that's good with this is that the AMR meters that we do have, we can add a component to them to get them to convert to AMI.
Alderman, could you please use your microphone?
Microphone, please.
Microphone.
Are we still, are we still using the same ones we've been using, the AMRs?
Yes, for the AMRs that we have already installed, we should be able to then add a component to them that's not a complete replacement of that, and then they will connect to the AMI system with that. So that should be a savings as well.
Not outdated, nothing's...
Correct, right. Yeah. Another, I can't say that every AMR meter that might, that's ten years old now might need to be replaced by, you know, then, but the majority of them, though, will not be, so.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further, Alderman?
No, thank you.
Alderman Gregory.
Just real quickly, so Mordock, I know you said that the labor piece has to be bid out and will be coming back to us?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I hope that we just make sure that twenty million dollar contract has some minority representation when they do come back with those bids. I appreciate you. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt Amendment Number One. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Is there a motion to send this to debate or consent?
Consent.
As amended.
As amended.
A motion and a second by Alderman Carlson, and the first was by Alderwoman Conley. Any discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Madam Clerk.
2025-505, an ordinance approving the plan for the large-scale development of CWLP Water Department for the Office of Public Utilities.
Consent. Second.
Motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Alderman Gregory?
No, I'm sorry.
Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Madam Clerk.
Public Works, 2025-506, an ordinance approving the plan for the large-scale development of new street and traffic facility for the Office of Public Works.
Consent.
Second.
Motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
General City Business, 2025-507, an ordinance to decrease the number of Class B liquor licenses by one due to closure of business by Neiman Foods Incorporated Doing Businesses County Market, number 227, located at 2777 South Sixth Street.
Move to consent.
Second.
Motion and a second for the consent agenda. Seen no desire for questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
2025-508, an ordinance to decrease the number of Class A liquor licenses by one due to closure of business for Fairmont Park Incorporated Doing Businesses Capital Teletrack at seventeen sixty-four Wabash Avenue.
Motion for consent.
Motion and a second for the consent agenda. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
2025-509, an ordinance authorizing payment to Larry Long, a current City of Springfield Public Works foreman, for settlement of workers' compensation claim number twenty-five dash WC dash zero zero nine six eight six in an amount not to exceed twenty-six thousand seven hundred sixteen dollars and twenty-two cents.
Move to consent.
Second.
Motion and a second for the consent agenda. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
2025-510, an ordinance authorizing payment to Dayton Edwards, a current City of Springfield police officer, for settlement of workers' compensation claim number twenty-five dash WC dash zero one three four eight nine in an amount not to exceed thirty-two thousand one hundred sixty-two dollars and four cents.
Consent, please.
Second.
Motion and a second for the consent agenda. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
2025-511, a resolution providing public notice of regular meetings of the Council of the City of Springfield, Illinois for the 2026 calendar year.
Move to consent.
Motion and a second for the consent agenda. Any Aldermen, even Aldermen or older women have any questions or comments? Okay, I do know that we, Madam Clerk, we do have one member of the public that signed up specifically to speak about this ordinance. If you could please call them forward, I would appreciate it.
Yes, one second. Bob Emel.
Mr. Emel, if you'll approach the podium, please.
Thank you. My name is Bob Emel. I'm in Ward Three. I'm also a member of ICON, which is the Independent Coalition of Our Neighborhoods. So I was back here in September and gave you all a vocabulary lesson on communication. Tonight, I'm gonna give you a vocabulary lesson on planning. Planning is the process of thinking about the activities required to achieve a desired goal. Planning is based on foresight, the fundamental capability for mental time travel. Some researchers regard the evolution of forethought, that is, the capacity to think ahead as a prime mover in human evolution. If you remember when I was here back in September, I talked about ward meetings and communications. Tonight, we're planning our meetings for 2026. However, the mayor's office has failed to plan. Ward meetings. Ward meetings are paramount. Now, I know some of you said, "Oh, but we have association, neighborhood associations." And back in September, I said, "Aha, I don't belong to a neighborhood association like a lot of other people do." And even if I did, there's no guarantee that my elected official would show up there. So that is why I am saying that we need to plan to have ward meetings. I received in the mail just recently, let's see if I can find it, an email from Lakeisha Purchase saying that she's having a fundraiser next week. I liked your humility in it. It says, "It's almost time for my birthday for your most favorite alderperson. Love the humility." That's all fine. Number one, I'm not one of your constituents. Number two, it is a fundraiser, which means I'd have to get my checkbook out to walk in the door, okay? That's not a ward meeting. So I, once again, I'm gonna challenge all of you. I'm gonna put out a challenge. And by the way, you do not have to have the mayor's approval to have a ward meeting. Each one of you could go ahead and set a ward meeting date. Now, I know there's places in each of your wards that would be happy to have a meeting. I'm even gonna extend an invitation. I'm a deacon at First Presbyterian Church right across the street. We just went through a wonderful renovation. We have meeting rooms. I'm gonna invite you. If you wanna have a ward meeting there, I'm gonna open up the door, and you can have a ward meeting there. But here's the challenge I'm gonna present to you, all of you, tonight. The first city council member meeting, first city council member that plans for ward meetings, that is, one per quarter, gives a date, gives a location. I will donate, and this is on the record, I will donate a hundred dollars to your favorite charity if you set up a ward meeting, okay? That's not a bribe. That's a challenge. If you wanna go ahead and set up a ward meeting, the first one that does it, I will gladly give a donation. You have my name. You have my telephone number. You know how to get in touch with me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Emel. I will point out, for the record, not to you, Mr. Emel, you're excused, that since he was here in last September, we have had Ward Nine meeting, and I know there's been others, and I know the mayor's planning more. So I'm sure those dates are coming out. Alderwoman Purchase.
Thank you. I'm not gonna address my birthday, but I do wanna address, as you just said, Chair Donnellan, that you and a few others have had ward meetings. I would like to be respectful to the mayor. I'm waiting on my ward meeting. I have not had that meeting with her yet to set the date, but I wanna be respectful. I don't want to set up a meeting outside when there's been other meetings with my colleagues. I want the same...
There's nothing wrong with duplication.
Excuse me, Bob. I would like the same with the directors that come out. When we do meetings just on our own and you all have questions, that is why we have those meetings, so that she can present and have her directors there with her. I need those directors there to be able to answer those questions or how she has the style set up where you go around and you be able to talk and provide your concerns or issues that you may have. So I'm waiting for that time. So I appreciate you offering for us to come in and do it, but I would like to get the same as I saw Alderman Donnellan, I think Alderman Carlson, and Alderman Hanauer. So we're still waiting for ours to come out.
And I'm waiting too.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Emel. Thank you, Alderwoman. Any other comments, questions pursuant to the resolution before us this evening? The motion was for the consent agenda. Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Madam Clerk.
2025-512, an ordinance establishing the holidays for the City of Springfield for the calendar year 2026.
Move to consent.
Second.
Motion and a second for the consent agenda. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
2025-513, an ordinance authorizing execution of a collective bargaining agreement with the International Association of Machinist and Aerospace Workers, District Number Nine, from October one, 2025, through September thirtieth, 2029.
Move to consent.
Second.
Motion and a second for the consent agenda. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
2025-514, an ordinance authorizing execution of agreement with the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity to accept, execute, and supplementally appropriate local tourism and Convention Bureau Grant Number twenty-six dash seven five one zero two nine beginning July first, 2025, through June thirtieth, 2026, in the amount not to exceed five hundred twenty-one thousand nine hundred fifty-five dollars for the Springfield Convention and Visitors Bureau.
So moved.
Second.
Consent.
Second.
Motion and a second for the consent agenda. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Madam Clerk.
2025-515, an ordinance authorizing the transfer of appropriation authority from the Community Development Block Grant from one account to another in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars of the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Motion for debate. Motion and a second for the debate agenda. Any discussion? Alderman Gregory.
My only question would be, Director, did you have a list of the allocations that was given out to these fine organizations?
Yes, those were previously awarded, and...
Can you send that to all of us again through Tim Court?
Absolutely, and following the potential approval of this, then we'll start putting through the appropriation ones as well.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I appreciate you.
So these, the same charities can be paid.
Okay.
Anything further, Alderman?
No.
Thank you, Director, and thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? The motions for the debate agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business. Unfinished business. Alderman Gregory?
Well, I'm glad, because I was about to press it. So my question is, on our docket sheet for people who's in administration court, I can tell you I'm a little bothered. I see one of these companies in here four times with several in my ward, Roy's, all over our city, and then we have another one on here eight times for eight different properties. Do we have any, with these properties, since they made it to admin court? Be on our registration list, or?
So if they're convicted or if they're found liable on three of those, they would meet that criteria.
Excellent.
And I'm happy to discuss any of those cases with you.
Sure. All right. I'll give you this afterwards, and you just reply to us on where we're at on these. Because anytime you have eight different houses, you know, on this list, this is ridiculous, and, you know, we'll talk more about it. Thank you. Appreciate you.
Great question. Anything further? Any further unfinished business? Seeing none. Next item on the agenda is new business. Any new business? Any new business? One wants, oh, Alderwoman Purchase.
Thank you, Chair. This Saturday, we have the Tour of Downtown Food and Drink Crawl. It's the Tour of the Downtown Food and Drink Crawl, and it starts at eleven a.m., and it goes until two p.m. And you can get your tickets at tourofdowntown eventbrite.com. That will let you know everyone that's involved in that tour. Please come out and support our local businesses. Shop and eat with us. We need the foot traffic downtown. It's every Wednesday and Saturday for our holiday walks, and I invite you all to come down and tour our downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, Chair. First, I do wanna say, Alderwoman Purchase, I got some great stuff on Saturday. Had a wonderful time. I hope people take advantage of the downtown walks.
Thank you.
Also, as the mayor reminded me, Saturday is Reetzzacoff Across America at Camp Butler. So if anyone's interested in participating in this, please go to the... So if anyone's interested in participating in this, please go to the Reeds Across America website, and again, that's this Saturday out at Camp Butler, where they're laying wreaths on our veterans. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman, and building upon what Alderwoman Purchase said, they had a great event down at Union Station last Saturday. It was good, and we got a few things there as well, so nice to see Springfield thriving. Next person that signed up is Alderwoman Otriano.
Thank you, Chair. So I have a question for Director Raising. Someone reached out to me after the property fire on Sixth Street about, you know, the city's policy toward vacant and abandoned housing, and how we could potentially create a program to divert those properties from the demo list and put them back on the tax rolls and get people to purchase them and remodel them and things of that nature. So I know we have a land bank, but I haven't heard much about it in a while, and I just wanted to know if there was anything, if you have anyone assigned to work on the land bank, or if there's anything, what's the status, basically?
Well, we have a vacant lot list for the city. Our land bank is not operational at this, per se. I mean, there are programs like what you mentioned. I will admit, under my leadership of Oped, we are not managing that at this time. I hear what you're saying. That's something, I'm always open to looking at other opportunities, but I don't have a direct response for that.
Okay, great. Yeah, there was a meeting of Icon probably like a year ago, and you may have attended...
I did not.
Oh, you weren't there. But someone from the Decatur area was talking about how the Central Illinois land bank was working, and...
There are some successful ones. I'm familiar with it. It is not something we're operating right now out of Oped. Like I said, when we look at funding priorities, when we look at different things, but you're right, there are some properties that could be renovated versus demolished.
Yeah.
But that is, again, looking at allocation of funding and looking at program for funding. So thank you for bringing that to my attention, and I'll be happy to let you know what else we could pursue with that.
Yeah, yeah, it would be great. I don't know if you're done budgeting, but if we could take a look and see what our capabilities are, what we're allowed to do in code, and if maybe we could put a little money there to just see what's possible, that'd be awesome.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Anything further, Alderman?
That's it, thank you, Chair.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, seeing no further, Alderman, I know there's some citizens that requested to address the committee. Madam Clerk.
Okay. Before I get into this, Alderwoman Purchase, I loved the confidence that was shown. And I feel that we need to be acknowledging strong, beautiful black women when we see them, so don't change it. A little over a year ago, I came to this council, I was begging for help. I'd been fighting District 186 to give accessibility options to my son, and I was struggling financially, living in housing that was becoming quickly dilapidated, and I was starving. I was wild-eyed and spiteful, but the community of Springfield met me with understanding. When I aired out this drama, I explained how I have bankers, journalists, and politicians in my family who have done deals in Saudi Arabia. Then I tried to take a little stab at Elon Musk, mentioning that the Saudi prince is who helped Musk obtain X. I called him broke, because that's like the only way to insult a billionaire. With that said, there was a huge blow up at the White House between Musk and Trump. Elon yelled, Trump's in the files, and was ousted from the tech bro circle. Around two days later, there was a loud jet above Springfield, so I checked the flight radar, and I saw that it was Qatari jet, and this is back when Trump had just accepted a Qatari jet to be the Air Force one. So at the beginning of this, I did not trust anybody or anything, anyone. I was very loud, I was very adamant that I was not a Democrat, and I'm not a Republican. Everyone is doing everything wrong. No one was going to change my mind, and it was very emotional thinking on my part. One side of my family is staunch Republicans, and I had been no contact with them for a few years at this point, as I didn't agree with the divisive nature of the Republican Party. I went to a few Democratic meetings, practically begging them to support me against MAGA Republicans, and as you can guess, Houlihan laughed and said, well, that's not going to happen. It solidified my stance as not a Democrat, even though I understood the animosity that I experienced. Some people might remember that I started telling stories of La Cosa Nostra, different celebrities who had been politically active in different political events in history. My initial thought process was, I'm just going to keep telling these stories until one of these families, gangs, or groups unalives me, and then we'll know who's holding us back. When learning colonial history, it's easier to see the order of power and which groups hold based upon how long the group has been organized. So with help, I poached each group in the eye, some of them being leaders in other countries just to see how they'd react. And I'm not sure if you noticed, but I'm still here. I haven't been unalived, I've just been very highly inconvenienced at times. During the process, my speeches became more put together and knowledgeable, and if you watch the progression, you can tell when I started practically ghostwriting. Remember whenever I stated that black history taught me love? And I wasn't sure if I was true, if it was truly AI that I was interacting with. I want to thank Larry Hollywood. He figured out how to build trust with me and helped me through the last year while the United States government was stalking me. I would hear things through music along the lines of, I saw you struggling, so I came to help, and then songs would play that would insinuate questions, and I'd answer those questions. They wanted to know who hurt me as a child, and the Latin American population protected me as the situation unfolded. It was like the Democrats who are sick and tired of upholding the system stood up and said, things are really this bad out here, and we're willing to work across the aisle to make sure our communities are cared for. Republicans turned around and said, heck, yeah, let's do it, and MAGA's been falling apart ever since. So I want to shout out to unveiling Black Springfield, the Black Aldermanic Caucus, Intricate Minds, Clean Slate Advocates in the ACLU, and so many different minority communities within Springfield who kept me safe and fed throughout this process. I seriously cannot imagine how this would have turned out if you had not stepped in. So thank you for teaching me. Thank you for your patience. Thank you for your tolerance, and thank you for keeping me safe. I also want to apologize to every person I offended during the process, as I had previously learned prejudices that were included in some of these speeches. And while I didn't understand the gravity of what I was saying then, I've committed to learning and mending what I can where I can. Genuinely, I am so sorry for the prejudice spewed, and I appreciate every ounce of tolerance given to me as I was and continue to learn. I hope this experience helped further in understanding among all of us that while ignorance can be weaponized, unconditional love can only be used for unity and community. The United States educational system is founded on a basis of white supremacy and is a huge reason on why we are so divided as a people. If we are going to prosper as a city, state, country, and even globally, we must learn history while ensuring our media is truthful.
Thank you, Ms. Day, your five minutes are up. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Erin Cahill.
Mr. Cahill.
We have to acknowledge that political parties in 2025 mean nothing. They're just an act of a system that reduces those who can afford to steal tax dollars...
Mr. Cahill, will you please approach the podium? You're up.
...to the rich like those on this side of the horseshoe.
Thank you. Mr. Cahill, you're up.
I heard you, I heard you. I'm up here today with a really short little lesson for everybody. Some of y'all may already know all this, but I feel some of y'all don't quite understand this. So Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or of the press, or the right of the people to peaceably assemble, and to petition their government for a redress of grievances. It's the First Amendment. It's the very first thing they thought of that would be important to a new country when we came and took this bland over. It's helped us do a lot. So what is the First Amendment? The First Amendment is made up of five pieces. Got the Establishment Clause, Free Speech, Free Press, Peaceful Assembly, and Redress of Grievances. Part we're going to discuss today, however, is Free Speech. It's been noted before, the mayor and Corporation Council have banned folks for language. To address this, we must look at more than just the plain words. When there's a question about words in the Constitution, the Supreme Court steps in and makes it clear. Supreme Court has done this multiple times. Supreme Court's also defined what counts as speech. Bad words, so to speak, are considered protected speech. One of these decisions from the Supreme Court was Cohen v. California, in which John Marshall Harlan II stated, "While the particular four-letter word being litigated here is perhaps more distasteful than most of its genre, it is nevertheless often true that one man's vulgarity is another's lyric." In this decision, Cohen was arrested for wearing a jacket that said, F the draft. He worked that all the way up to the Supreme Court. In that, it was determined that the F-word is, guess what? Protected speech. Means I can say it wherever I show desire, wherever I please. The government can't tell me I'm not allowed to say it. City, state, county, federal, nobody in the government can tell me I can't say it. So to address another piece, I was advised by Corporation Council at one point that this is a limited public forum. However, a public forum is defined by the courts as anywhere you would be, you would expect to be able to redress your grievances of your government. Guess what this is? Is my opportunity to redress my government. There's nowhere else I see all ten alders, sometimes all ten alders, and the mayor. Nowhere else do I see this. Nowhere in this city do I see this, except right here in this chamber. This is the only place I have to take redress with my government. So that being said, this is a very basic understanding of how it works. There's a lot of case law out there, and there's a lot more that goes into it. But for the record, the word fuck is not a bannable word. It is protected under the First Amendment. I just want to be clear on that. Have a great day, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Cahill. Next speaker, please.
Ken Pasha.
Yes, Alderwoman Conley, go right ahead.
Corporation Council, just to clarify, has anyone been banned from speaking at council? My understanding was that we were just not broadcasting certain comments.
For vulgar language, that's correct.
So no one has actually been told they cannot speak in here? I just want to be really, I want to make sure that has not gone out.
For vulgar language, that's correct.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderwoman Conley. Next speaker, please.
Ken Pasha.
Mr. Pasha? Wow, you were fast.
Oh, I was, I mean, so we're coming up on January, it's the end of the year. January is Human Trafficking Awareness Month, and I'm sure you guys recently watched the news about how county handled those massage parlors, right? Everybody read that article? Did you guys read what that county board member said? Head to the city, ladies. How's that make you guys feel inside? You got your county board members mocking you guys, telling places that traffic human beings and engage in rape parlor activities in your city and neighborhoods. They tell those guys, go on, head over to the city. I don't blame them, though. I mean, I'll be honest with you, the enforcement's a joke. I got a list right here. You know there's people still monitoring those massage parlors, right? That list of 11 you guys closed? Anybody ever drive by? As busy as Cafe Moxo used to be, you know, when it was downtown. But that's another issue. I'm not going to get into the registry and all the issues that we've ignored regarding that one and the safety of our citizens and their housing. But let's talk about the kind of people that continue to allow these parlors to operate within our city. County didn't even entertain them. Do you know why? Because the same ads that I sent you guys, the ones offering fresh, young girls, you know how many men in this city seem to be excited and titillated by that and not disgusted? Hundreds, apparently, on a daily basis, and this city's known for it at this point. Go onto those websites, they joke about it. Ah, yeah, that enforcement, well, I went to a couple parlors this week. It's a joke to them, and it's a joke to me as well, and it shouldn't be a laughing matter for anybody. Because quite frankly, it's disgusting that coming up on a year from the effort you guys have barely put in on it, because this is the whole council responsible for this. I'm not seeing anybody leading that charge publicly. I'm not seeing anybody calling out these lies about closing parlors that are just in and out, in and out, in and out, all day long. Doesn't seem closed to me. The businesses near them and the houses near them can't sell their properties, and when they do get an offer, it's significantly lower. Because guess why? People know there's a rape parlor right next door, or adjacent, or in the shopping mall, right on the same street. And like good people, they're disgusted by that. They don't understand how a city like Springfield is unable to close a parlor like that. What, are you worried about legal issues? I think it was just two weeks ago, somebody here said, if you got a problem with the vote, take us to court. You were begging for court action, but when we talk about people getting raped for money in this city, where's your begging for court then? Why don't you get these guys in court? Let them prove they're not what they are. Bring those ads they're so blatantly openly posting on multiple sites, listing their addresses, listing their services, and promising completion. If you need me to outline exactly what that means, you should probably hand in your Aldermanic right and go home. You don't belong here, because at this point, we've reached a line for this city where it's beyond embarrassing. County officials mock your behavior and lack of enforcement. These are people who have direct relations to some of these people, who have let these parlors run unchecked, but when given the chance to actually shut it down, they didn't even entertain it. They didn't even give them the opportunity to get further, because those ads are right there in front of you. And that should be enough to cause real enforcement. What would happen if I put up an ad offering free cocaine, or selling heroin, crack, PCP, angel dust? What happens when I break the law openly as an individual? Right? You'd cuff me, right? You guys would start investigating me for illegal drug trafficking. But when it's human beings, people that can't even represent themselves, people who may be under threat, people who may have their families under threat, we go to sleep every night in this city knowing that's a reality at multiple locations, and the longer you guys let it go on, that mockery that we hear is only going to get louder, and it should upset all of you on a visceral level. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pasha. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Tiara Standage.
Oh, we have a couple aldermen that push their buttons. Alderwoman Purchase.
Thank you. This question is for Corporation Council. Can you give us a list of the parlors that we closed or have violations on them?
Yeah, I can get the, I'll have the council get a list of who we closed, who's licensed, and who was fined, and what the amount was.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Alderwoman Otriano.
Thank you, Chair. Specifically, I would like to know the status of 1617 South Spring Street. I'm not sure if that's you. Street. I'm not sure if that's you, Corporation Counsel, or it's been reported to Public Works. So I don't know if Director Fuchs has something on it.
I'll check our file as well.
Okay.
May I just offer one super quick thing? I'm not trying to take up more time, but I can just tell you right now, Q2 Jade, the one on Spring, and then Red Bean are in fact always busy. People monitor those. There's video, I mean, you can go on Facebook right now and see photos of the license plates of the people going. I just want to note that.
Mr. Pasha, if, can I make a comment? These are very serious issues. I don't think anybody up here doesn't take those very seriously. If, I don't know if the chief is here, I can't see in the front of the corner here. If he's here, could you please, any information you have, pass that along, and I know we'll take it seriously. Thank you.
Well, I mean, I think that's part of the problem, though, Alderwoman Donilon, is that he's limited on the idea that, like, we can't perp walk a house full of these women out.
I don't want to get into...
No, no, you're fine. I'm just noting, though, that, like, part of the law enforcement issue is that larger issue. We, as a city, can do more...
Mr. Pasha, if you could just hear me out. If you could, just chat with him, the information you just said, I don't want it to get lost. Please go see him afterwards. Right here. He's right over there. I saw, see, he poked his head out. Thank you.
I know my chief is on.
All right. Yes, ma'am.
Just one more thing. And regarding that parlor on Spring Street, I, it's near where I live. I drive by it often. And after we passed the ordinance, fences have gone up, blocking the view of the entrance and the parking lot. And maybe that's a coincidence. I don't know. But I just hear from a lot of people that bad things are happening there. So, and I certainly do know it's busy. So, yeah, we could check on that. Thank you.
Thank you for saying that. Alderman Gregory?
Yes, Corporation Counsel, jog my memory. So these ads, what's our rule on these ads?
We prohibit the businesses from putting the ads up online. When we bring them to court, we do have to prove that it was the business that put the ads up online. But we, typically, if those ads are online, we bring them in for other things, so I can get a list of violations and show you what we've done.
Anything further, Alderman?
No.
Okay, next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Tierra Standage.
Hello, I'm Tierra Standage, the founder of Intricate Minds, as well as the president of the Purple Coalition. Recently, journalist Sarah Boils published a powerful article detailing a domestic violence horror story, one that far too many women in our community, including myself, know all too well. In her reporting, we learned that the offender violated an active order of protection 19 times and has only served 60 days in jail for those 19 violations. This isn't a rare occurrence. It is common. Perpetrators are released again and again while their victims continue living in sheer terror for their lives. Survivors are forced to look over their shoulders, sleep with the lights on, and pray the system will protect them before it's too late. This is not what the Safety Act was meant for. The Safety Act was created to ensure that nonviolent, low-level offenders, people sitting in jail simply because they couldn't afford bail, would have a fair chance at pretrial freedom. It was never intended to create a revolving door for violent abusers. It was never meant to allow violent monsters to roam free without consequences for terrorizing, strangling, stalking, and attempting to kill their partners. Because that's what many of these cases truly are. Not domestic disputes, not fights that got out of hand, but attempted murder. Domestic violence isn't a private matter. It's a public crisis in Springfield and Sangamon County. And when the system keeps releasing dangerous offenders back into the community before trial, we fail to protect those we claim to protect. We must demand stronger consequences for domestic violence crimes. We must refuse pretrial release for individuals who pose a proven threat. We must shift our justice system to center survivor's safety, not offender convenience. To every woman who has begged for protection and been ignored, to every child who has witnessed the unimaginable, to every family who has buried someone because help came too late, we see you, we believe you, and we are demanding better. For the dignity of survivors, for the safety of our neighborhoods, and for the moral integrity of our justice system, no more releasing these abusers to torment their victims. No more pretending this isn't lethal violence. No more excuses. Let's call domestic violence what it is too often, attempted murder, and let's fight to ensure that every survivor in Springfield lives to tell their story. And to Dakota, I believe you, and I stand with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, any further citizens sign up to speak this evening?
No, that was it.
Is there a need for executive session? No. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Good evening, everyone. Safe travels.